Hello everyone, welcome to I A C E. You're watching Target S S C G L C H S L English Session 12. Let us start with the first question. So, what is the first question? In the following question, out of the four alternatives, select the alternative which is the best substitute of the phrase. And if you can think of one word, let us answer this one, right? So, to slap with one's hand are a flat object, okay? And if you think, so, flat object is a thing, my hand is a thing, so, slap is a thing, okay? So, it is my key, here is the options, two options, I will use directly. Office is my key, and they, like, what is it? So, whip is there, whip is a option, and also my key is flag, right? So, normally, whip or flag, I think, what is it? Lash is a sense, I think, what is it? Lash, and meaning, I think, so, you put in a letter object, a belt is a thing, a corset is a thing, a coat, name is a thing, lash is a thing. That is, I will use it, flag is a thing, whip is a thing. If flag is a bad expression, we have an idiomatic expression. And then, to flag a dead horse, okay? If flag is a bad expression, I think, to flag a dead horse. Okay, to flag a dead horse. And idiomatic expression, right? Normally, flag is a thing, lash is a thing. And normally, a guru is a last, a code is a thing, and he moves, right? Because, whoever is moving, so, dead horse is a thing, so, moving, a dead horse is moving. But, he moves, not, like, I use it, I waste my effort. And if it is possible, that is possible, because of that, my effort is wasted, I use it, the name is a thing, flag a dead horse. Idiomatic expression is also there, but, so, I use it, I use it. I think, flat object is a thing, hand is a thing, flat object. But, I think, whip is not, flag is not, right? I think, what is it, clover? Normally, clover is a meaning, I think, hit hard, okay? Hit hard. Hit hard, name is a thing, so, clover is a thing. But, I think, that is also the answer. To slap with one's hand, slap is a thing, so, what is it, clover? Clover is a thing, hit hard. Hit hard, a hard name is a thing, clover is a thing, but, you cannot take this one. So, my answer is, spank. So, what is it, what is it, better word, I think, spank is the score. So, that is why, for this question, our answer is what? Option A, okay? Now, let us go for the next question. So, second question, what is it, cinema, there is cinema, I think, deployment is a word, right? So, normally, deployment. So, deployment and meaning, I think, this is a context, what is it? Normally, army is a word. Army is a thing, army is a thing, all equipment is a thing. Army and equipment, any place, send it, name is a thing, deployment. And send army personnel and equipment to a place. That is, I think, deployment, right? That is, what is it, you put in, you put in, right? My, what is it, ban, normally, ban is a meaning, destruction. Ban is a meaning, I think, destruction. But, this is my answer, a chance, next question, what is it, banishment? Normally, banishment is a meaning, I think, send away. Whoever is in a place, so, leave it, or leave it, banishment is a thing. And exclusion, okay? So, but, this is also my answer, okay? Next, what is it, so, stationing. So, obviously, stationing is a thing, deployment is a thing, right? Next, what is it, strategy. Strategy is a meaning, I think, to make a strategy. So, strategy is a thing, strategy is a thing. But, this is also my answer. So, my deployment is a word, I think, my suit is a word, I think, is stationing, okay? But, this is army, army context, easy, but, so, answer is what? Option C. Now, let us go for the next question. So, what is it, I think, antenna, then, I think, okay? My key, this word, this word, meaning, I think, false appearance, okay? Okay? False appearance. False appearance, okay? So, but, false appearance, but, in the video, I think, what is it, right? So, frontage, so, frontage, I think, same appearance. Frontage, I think, synonyms, okay? Here, I think, synonyms, right? Similar, meaning, outward appearance, okay? Then, outward appearance, outward appearance. Outer appearance, similar, right? Next, what is it, veneer. My, veneer, meaning, I think, wood, right? A wood, decoration is used, this layer is a thing, veneer is a thing. So, right, what is it, decoration, layer for, decorative. Okay, decorative layer, okay? Decorative layer, wood, okay? A wood, decorative layer, I think, veneer, so, this is also my answer. I think, what is it? A, cinema, I think, frontage, I think, similar, okay? What is it, antenna? So, antenna, but, we, my answers, okay? What is it, my reality? But, what is it, false appearance? So, false appearance, my answer is, reality, so, for this question, our answer is what? Option D. Now, let us go for the next question. So, what is it, fourth one, right? So, improve the bracketed part, I think, sentence improvement question, let us answer this one. So, what is it, if you come across, okay? So, if you come across new words, you should look them up in the dictionary, okay? My, I think, the words, which, I will use, dictionary, what is it, I will use. So, dictionary, what is it, I will use, and, I think, that idea, convert it, I will try to use, look them up picture, okay? Look for them. Normally, look for, I think, set, look for, I think, set, okay? Look for, I think, set, look them up, I think, set. But, two sets, I think, so, what is it, look for, look them up, normal, look for, meaning, in general. In general, I think, look for, okay? A person is a thing, a thing is a thing, with the, okay, for general. But, if it is, I think, a book, okay? A book, or database, okay? A book, I think, a database, I think, look them up, okay? Normally, look for, okay? But, I think, a book, database, with the, okay, look them up. But, I think, dictionary, okay? I think, dictionary, dictionary, but, dictionary, okay, book, okay? But, I think, look them up, okay? But, my answer is, no improvement. Okay, I think, look at, look at, normally, small name, look at, right? Look at, see, okay, look them down, meaning, inferior, okay? Inferior, 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 okay? Inferior, look them down, okay? Inferior. If you answer, inferior, look them down. But, this way, my answers, my answers, okay? Look them up, I think, database, okay, book, okay? Either information, okay, look them up. But, this question, my answer is, option D. Now, let us go for the next question. So, what is it, fifth one, I think, blank, let us answer this one. So, crimes against women are dash of the deep rooted patriarchal system of our society. And, I think, first, observe, I think, patriarchal society, okay? This is, I think, patri, patri, normally, father, okay? Patri, father, matri, mother, patri, father, matri, so, mother, okay? Actually, I think,archy,archy, rule, okay? Government, okay? Here, I think, this rule, fathers, fathers, okay? I think, men, okay? And men, rules, okay? Men, rules, okay? Dominant, okay? Men, but, the name is, okay? Male domination, okay? Okay? Male domination. Generally, I think, male domination, okay? Patriarchal, okay? Okay? Patriarchal, otherwise, female domination, okay? Matriarchal, okay? Male domination, okay? Patriarchal, okay? Female domination, okay? So, anyway, I think, subject, I think, crimes, subject, I think, crimes. Crimes, I think, singular, plural, plural, okay? But, I think, a verb, yes, okay? Crimes, okay? Crimes against women are indicators, okay? Because, crimes, okay? So, verb, okay? Yes, okay? But, I use it, okay? If it is, I think, subject, verb agreement, verb, okay? Noun, okay? Verb, okay? Generally, common sense, right? But, I think, indicates, okay? I think, manifestations, okay? Right? So, I think, verb, okay? I think, yes, okay? That is, my key point, right? Actually, I think, manifestation, okay? I think, manifestation, okay? I think, noun, okay? They are, T I Y O N. If it is, okay? A word, T I Y O N, okay? What is it, noun, okay? Noun, okay? See, after, okay? T I Y O N, okay? Then, okay? Normally, E T E, okay? Verb, okay? Okay? E T E, okay? Okay? T I Y O N, okay? Okay? Create, creation, fluctuate, fluctuation, deviate, deviation, okay? E T E, okay? Verb, okay? T I Y O N, okay?[558.34] T i o nte ante noun out Gabbati verbic Just samei boatin singulari boatin Adhe noun kyesar Just out Plural Kama ki plural nounu This singular Gabbat di eliminate Manifestation meaning manne kendi Same as indicate So indicate Just not only Display just Show just Gabbati Rangea pochand Manifestatione poch Chokana So demonstrate Just demonstrate Gabbati Manifestation meaning manne same Indicate rangea pochand Demonstrate rangea poch Chokana Plural actually Ochindi demonstrating So crimes against women are demonstrating Off andam Vali Kama ki demonstrating Valley off raagod Kama ki enavante Noun raval Enavali noun Noun raval Gabbati kama ki Demonstrations ante maybe possible But nevundi Demonstrating Undi Manne ki jarana ka Tiskuna padki Demonstrating oftenadi Akkodaga unten Gabbat neydis Kuremante Demonstrating diskule Mokka Idharana Padki Manne di use Chale Indu kente Demonstrations off andangani Demonstrating off andjappam Gabbati you cannot take this one Kene kara Explanation Suntama I context Manne ki Andyarantente Manaa society lo Manasociety lo Women ki against Kriams Jaru tunai Daniki So The reason Ani Daniki reason Manne kendi patriarchal system Chupthananga I chupthanamante E patriarchal At the male domination Undi I chupinched E crimes against women Chupthananga Gabbat manne kena valante I chupinched Chupthananga Gabbat Manne manifestations Rangea poch Manne ki manifest Unna vadi Better word Manne kendi ante Manifestations And grammar Gavach Rente Context Gavach Manne ki e four words Runchi Manifestation Word Mathram Answer Use Just To just Gavutam Okayna Now let us go for the next question Manne kara Six one It's Chudum Six one Manne ki fill in the blank Get Again Smakavu No Churigada Three Indian ad agencies have dash awards At the international competition Kama ki Ochindi Awards Guring Chinchin Okna Awards Manne keni Some Up time Yes Some Attain Yes Some Bag Just Some Procure Just Some Manne ki jathka Abdares They Kama ki obtain And not get Okayna Attain And not get So bag And not get So procure And not get We need Common Meaning Use Nante Get Advinda Kama ki Kevundi Kama ki So obtain And not attain And not bag And not procure And not I need Common Meaning And to get But different context Award Right Normala suppose Kira Knowledge Andam Nevanna Mo Knowledge Knowledge Andapudu Knowledge Manne keni Yes Some Knowledge Ne obtain Yes Some Attain Yes Some Bag Just Some Knowledge Ne yes Some And they obtain Yes Some Knowledge Ne yes Some Obtain Oka Where Food Andam On Food Food Ne yes Some Food Ne manu Obtain Yes Some Attain Yes Some[252.14]